Six o'clock, you all ready?
Yes.
Hereby call the City Council meeting for July 11th to order if I could get Councilmember Mercado to lead us in the fudge.
Hand over her. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Linda, roll call.
Hey, Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Mercado.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Here.
And Mayor Sear.
Here. Thank you very much. Do we have any reordering of the agenda tonight? Alrighty. Public comments, now is your chance to get up and speak about any item you want, whether on the agenda, not on the agenda. I have one speaker slip for later on. I don't see, Kyle, you're the only one, nope, okay, we're good. Closing down public comment, going back to the consent calendar. We have the minutes of June 27, 2019, regular City Council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2018-19, designation of voting delegate and alternate for 2019 League of California Cities Annual Conference Business Meeting. Gentlemen?
Move approval. I'll second.
Okay, Linda.
Okay, Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
And Mayor Sear.
Aye, thank you very much. No presentations, no public hearings. Councilmember comment/items. Councilmember Sanchez, do you have any comments or items?
I would just like to thank the City Council for getting together for the 4th of July parade. It was a wonderful gathering and it was nice to have everybody together. It was a fun time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it was fun. It was big crowd, it was fun.
Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Yeah, Mayor, I have two items. You know, I want to, for those that enjoy seeing the flags flying, the flags have been flying via the patriotism of one good citizen, Mr. John Sanchez. He is, deserves a...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Because I've gone with him about three times and he's done it probably forty times in a row. So, it's not easy to do and I really appreciate it. And so, I would like us to just bring back the solar lighting issue as soon as possible, like maybe next meeting would be fine if we were available, but as soon as, as soon as it fits into the schedule. And then, I had a second, second item with the current contract we have with him and S., I would like to have it brought back for discussion with the council as soon as it can fit into our agenda.
We can do that. It's also, that contract and the Tetra Tech contract are both going to be coming back early fall, I believe September, but I would have to check for sure because you would previously agendized potentially changing the allocation of work between the two. You had given them three month extensions and...
I knew we had some discussion and I hadn't seen anything, so.
Right, so there were three month extensions, I believe, ending the first of October, but I'm not positive, and so, in the early fall, you'll be working with both of them anyway.
Okay.
Terrific.
Then that's enough?
No new, no new business? Just...
Sure. And it's on the agenda already in September.
Oh, thank you.
They're very organized, you know.
Madam Mayor, didn't we give them a six month when they came in here? And then we gave them, we said, I want to, I think I'm the one that made that motion and I want to...
I forget whether it was three or six, but as Linda said, it's going to be on your agenda in September to start working with them.
We gave them six months to come back, yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. Councilmember King, any comments/items?
Just to pair up what John said, you know, we went to the 4th of July parade, we didn't get hosed down by anybody with a fire hose.
No rotten tomatoes?
No rotten tomatoes. And it was actually a pretty good turnout.
Hopefully it was over eighty.
And it's, it's interesting to see how many people that you know when you're in one of those parades.
We have everybody.
I'm the same, I just wanted to thank you all, headed it up and did a great job.
I agree. I wanted to thank the Solvang Rotary for inviting us and John Sanchez for putting together two cars and getting everybody involved. How long has it been, Ed, since the whole council?
It's been a while, fifty years, I think. We're only twenty-five years old, but it's, it's probably been at least fifteen years.
So, that kudos, kudos, kudos to you.
I'd like to give full credit to Rotary who put it together, knew it, did everything.
Solvang Rotary.
They did a good job.
It was, it was a wonderful event. I, it was so nice to have the whole council in it this year. I'd like to thank Finn Rungy for fixing a vandalized free library box by the school. Bob Bott and Frank Sear for moving the book boxes by Pa's Dog Park. You know, they, I didn't, I didn't do any of that, they did it for me. The grandkids dug a hole, I mean, I should thank them too. The other one is, I wanted to say, there's a League of California Annual Conference coming up in October and it would be very nice feeding off of our 4th of July parade. It would be really, really cool if all the council members would consider going to that. And then the one item, those are my comments, my one item is, I had asked at one point about the cannabis ordinance regulations coming back to council. Since we have stores that are selling CBD, we have a business that would like to come in and do the chemical testing, and the ordinance we have right now is everything, it's just a total blackout. So, I'm, I'm hoping that we can revisit the cannabis.
Yeah, actually, I spoke with the city attorney today and I will be working with Scott on scheduling that and the, and next available meeting that we can accommodate that, so.
Terrific, thank you very much. Alrighty, no more council member comment items, moving on to written communications. None? Committee reports? Okay. Business items. Agenda item number four, consideration of Proposition 68, the grant application requirements and joint operation of an aquatics complex. Mr. Bello.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. Well, if you recall, last time I was here, we had a record-breaking length of agenda item title, and originally we were thinking about making this into two separate items, but I talked with Scott and Linda, we can, we can do it again, we'll break, break the length of title record. So, we do have a resolution before you and a joint use lease agreement. Both of these follow on your conceptual approval at the June meeting, June 13th, acting as the lead applicant for the Proposition 68 statewide park development grant and the conceptual approval to enter into a joint use lease agreement with the high school district. One part of the grant requirement is to, for the council to approve a resolution approving the grant, so approving the city to apply for those grant funds, and that is your Resolution 19-18. And then, the city attorney has been working with the legal counsel for the high school district in drafting a joint use lease agreement for your consideration this evening. The agreement is structured to include those requirements for the state grant and including the thirty-year term and renewal options for that, that time period. In addition, it contains mutual indemnification language designed to protect each of the three entities and additional terms laying out each entity's expected roles and responsibilities. Those three entities being the City of Beelton, the San Andres Valley Union High School District and the San Andres Valley Community Aquatics Foundation. And so, in short, those, those roles are as follows. The district will maintain the facility, the city will handle scheduling and programming, and the foundation will continue as the fundraising arm and assist in programming when the facility is constructed. Part of this agreement also includes the formation of a joint use committee. As Councilmember Mercado knows, we have a joint use committee currently for our agreement with the Beelton Union District, and this committee for this agreement would include representatives from our city council and staff, the high school district's board and staff, as well as the foundation. And that, that group is responsible to discuss mutual, mutually beneficial policies for the, the running and operation of the facility, as well as programming ideas, et cetera. So, the, that, that committee also will implement those operational policies and activities. The item addresses potential use of state grant funding, but no anticipated expenditures of general fund revenues are associated with the actual grant application or either of these items. If you recall, the foundation is providing professional grant writer to complete that application on our behalf, so it doesn't take staff time, takes some signatures, and of course, the staff is well-versed and aware of everything that's going into that to make sure that the city is protected, but a big, a big help in having a professional grant writer to do that and not have to pay for that grant writer. So, the, the recommendation is to consider two distinct motions, the first being approval of Resolution Number 19-18, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Beelton, California, approving the application for the statewide park development and community revitalization program grant funds, and the second motion to approve a joint use lease agreement with San Andres Valley Union High School District and San Andres Valley Community Aquatics Foundation with direction to the city attorney to finalize any, final language of the agreement for execution by the parties. And one piece that you might have realized, the exhibits A and B were not included in the agreement, those are aerial maps, one of the whole high school property, and then a close-up of that footprint of the aquatic facility, and those, the architect is, is preparing those, so we don't have those for you tonight. But hopefully you know where the high school is.
You do know where the high school is.
And with that, I...
Questions?
Entertain any questions from, from council.
Okay, first of all, any questions?
My question is just some liability of something in this pool, if some kid drowns, what's our requirement for our protection? You know, somebody's going to, first thing they'll do is sue the city, the county, the...
Everyone involved.
Everybody involved, but as being a third catcher.
Yeah, I'll defer to the city attorney to give you a more detailed answer.
Sure, so each party is indemnifying the others for every claim or, or demand, including injury to death of persons and damage to property arising from the negligence or wrongful misconduct of the indemnifying party. So, what we would have to do is see who was sort of in charge at that time, what did the situation arise from, if it was something that the city was overseeing, then it would go to our insurer. If it was something that the district was in charge at the time, then they would be the one indemnifying the city and the foundation. If, so for example, if it's a, a district interscholastic team, then they would be indemnifying us. If it's a program that we're running, then yes, we would have the liability, it would go to the insurer and we would be indemnifying the other two parties.
Following up on that, the city is in charge of programming.
Correct.
If we have free swim, we've hired the lifeguards, something happens, they're responsible.
One, as, as far as, it would be during city program time, as you're speaking of employees, that is another clause here, making sure that employees of one entity are not considered employees of the others. And the foundation actually is the proposed entity who would be employer of record for lifeguards. That's something that the district is currently working on with Hancock to have, I think we mentioned before, a, a lifeguard certification course and hopefully being able to have that on the campus, as Hancock has other classes right there on the high school campus, and that is the, I guess, the, the basis for having enough lifeguards on a continuing basis to be able to operate.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I was just going to say, Greg, under that indemnity clause, it's, we're all required to have a million dollar insurance policy anyways.
Correct.
So, I don't see a problem.
Yes, and all users, of course, just as where the rec center would be, you know, doing a waiver form, of course, that only limits you, but at least it does something.
Right, thank you very much. I do have one speaker slip, so I'm opening it up for, to the public, I have Jake Kalkowski.
Good evening, my name is Jake Kalkowski. I live at 422 Free Road Drive here in Beelton. Been a Valley resident for fifteen years, and my wife and I are very happy to be raising our two boys here in the Valley. Since 2005, I have been a teacher and aquatics coach at San Andres High School. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf as a board member of the San Andres Valley Community Aquatics Foundation. Couple of years ago, here in this room, the city council, or the city of Beelton was gracious enough to support the foundation in its early stages. Since then, we have come a tremendous way and are very close to completing our goal of bringing a community aquatic park to the citizens of our valley. I would like to thank the city of Beelton for your most recent support and applaud you for showing what can happen when people work together. With the future program and support of the Beelton Parks Network, you are showing that all of the Valley will have access to a healthy lifestyle, and thank you again for helping us to reach our goal of making the San Andres Valley one of the healthiest communities in America, and I'm more than happy to entertain any questions that you may, may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, I'd like to thank you for being part of the foundation, it's a good, it's a, it's an honorable thing to do, I think it's a, I'm glad to have somebody in town working on it and our staff.
Thank you, we have some wonderful people involved, and quite a few years ago, we've been through some other ones when maybe KK was, was playing in the past, and this is just a great opportunity that we all have, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Disappointed my daughter didn't get to give it back.
I know.
Yeah, tell her to come back and coach.
Okay, so, discussion, a motion?
No, we have to have two separate motions.
Two separate motions.
Okay, I'm, oh yeah, I'm closing it to the public, coming back for two separate motions or discussions.
I think it's a good program and I like the fact that we are in the lead, and that gives us, like I said, I would be more than willing to give my time to be part of the committee. So, I would like to make a resolution that we accept them, dash, number 19-18 as written.
And?
And...
B?
And B.
Second. No, no. You have two separate motions, so this is just for the resolution.
Oh, two separate motions, excuse me.
So, I was second the first one.
Okay, so Resolution Number 19-18, Resolution, City Council, City of Beelton, approving the application. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
And Mayor Sear.
Aye, alrighty.
And before your second motion, the reason you're giving me direction to finalize language are there, are some technical things I'm working out with district council. The primary one is, district has a problem leasing the land because lease requires them to go through certain procedures, so we're trying to work out a way to call it a license, call it something else that will still meet the grant requirements, but will also meet their requirements. This has nothing to do with indemnity, scheduling, any other major substantive things, it's some technical stuff that we need to finish up, we couldn't finish it up before it had to come to you today. So, that's why we also need that direction, I just wanted to make that clear for you all for the record.
And the grant has to be submitted by when?
August 5th.
Okay.
We have, we have more than enough time, it should be done next week.
Madam Mayor, I move for approval of a joint use lease agreement with San Andres Valley Union High School District and San Andres Valley Community Aquatics Foundation with direction to the city attorney to finalize the language of the agreement for execution by the parties.
Clear.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Alrighty, Linda.
Okay, Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Sear.
Aye, thank you. Wow, okay, agenda item number five, discussion and direction for funding the Arts and Culture Committee. Ms. Zamora?
Madam Mayor, City Council members, on February 28, 2019, City Council discussed the priority and goals for fiscal years 19, 20, 20, 21. One of the goals that City Council discussed was to create an Arts and Culture Committee. The budgeted, the preliminary budgets presented on the City Council meetings of May 9th and 23rd did not have a budget item amount for the Arts and Culture, and the reason for this was the assumption that the Arts and Culture Committee would first develop, meet and talk about ideas to promote arts and culture within the city, and then there was the assumption that they would come back to City Council and give City Council a list of ideas and proposed funding. But at this time, City, City Council can discuss funding $50,000 to pre-fund the Arts and Culture Committee, that way they don't come back at a future item, at a future date to request funding. And if City Council decides to fund the Arts and Culture Committee, that would then create a budget amendment that would be brought back at the next budget amendment item, which would be probably like September, October. And staff recommends that City Council discuss funding for the Arts and Culture Committee and provide direction to staff on adding the Arts and Culture as a budget line item and amend the fiscal year 2019-20 budget by the funding allocation now at the next budget council meeting. If you have any questions, feel free to answer them, or if you have any, any questions for Kyle, he's also available.
So, before we go to the public, are there any questions for Chanel or Kyle regarding the funding?
When would our comments be appropriate for the discussion?
After I open and close public comment.
Thank you.
Opening public? Closing public. Vice Mayor, your comments would be appropriate now.
Madam Mayor, this is not a small task, and I know that a lot of people are encouraged by this idea, but I, I kind of liken this to a business option, business opportunity. We have a party before us that wants to spend money and we don't know what their qualifications are, and I would like to see an organization chart, if you will, but more, more directly bylaws of who's going to be giving us direction as, as the committee. We've talked about getting a committee together, since there's no immediate need to do it, you know, we've, we've set it up in the year, I have no problem with setting aside the money, but I feel that the community deserves to know what the Culture Committee is made of and their, and I think bylaws, you know, we've, we have a Beelton Historical Society, and we have to jump through several hoops for the internal revenue, for, for money that we raise, and I would hope that the Cultural Committee would be involved in sharing revenue enhancement ideas for the city, that the, this is not going to be an item that the city is funding period from day one. So, I'd like to express my concern for the seriousness of $50,000, and I'd like to know what, what direction, perhaps in thirty or sixty or ninety days, we could have a, a template of what kind of ideas they have involved. And, you know, when, when I, we read goal three from the, from our visioning plan, page 27, we talked about opportunities, variety of art and culture, and we also had some conversations about opportunities, build a center or establish an art guild. So, I think those are things that I'd like to see a forecast of, it's, it's very hard to just say, sure, we'll, okay, we've got $50,000 to do arts and culture. I think we should, we deserve having it explained what it is, and perhaps the, the people that, that have ideas, it'd be a great, you know, opportunity to open a forum or have a, have a place where people can meet to deal with what they're, what they would like the city to participate in, rather than just giving them money, I think the organization is important. I, I just ask that we, you know, we, I don't see a need, and if there's, if there's some major thing, you know, like if we had a centennial celebration coming up in six months, I'd think we'd put rush on it, but I'm just asking that we have the, the folks that see the beauty of this, and I was, I was out today on the Avenue of the Flags, and, you know, we've got raised bricks in the sidewalk, and it's, it's a tree root, that the tree's been gone for over a year, and I think we should have those ground down, and I think maybe if, if we, if we had to do something immediately, I'd say, let's, let's put some benches or trash receptacles there for the people to come and enjoy what we have as an avenue. And there's some, you know, at a lot of places, we could have some nice benches up against planters facing the view that they have on the avenue. And, you know, we, we saw our, our lighting project in front of, right in front of the city hall, it's, we're at, we're at that way, or they, that wound up being a very expensive project, and so I'd like us to...
That came out of Missouri funds.
Okay, no, but I meant that, that type of idea.
I agree, that was, that was very expensive, I agree.
And so, if, so we can kind of lay a scope out and say, here's, you know, we don't want to go there, or do we want to go there? Do we want, does somebody want us to build a building? You know, I've had conversations with the Thousand Oaks Council members at events, and they, they wish somebody would come and take their performing arts center away from them because they, it's been the hugest albatross they've ever had, and Scott may even have some exposure to that, but I, I just would like us to get a, get a timeline, maybe put a, have a forecast or a, a business plan, if you will, put together. I think we, we owe it to the citizens to be business-minded when we're talking about $50,000. And I don't have a problem with $150,000, but I'd like...
You don't have a problem with $150,000?
You should have never said that.
I'll read about it when it's...
Before I have my comments, does anybody else have any comments they'd like to add?
I do. No, go ahead, Eric, no, okay, I'll go. I, I agree with, I agree with Ed, and I think that, you know, just saying, oh, well let's just throw $50,000 out there, because we all saw how much money got thrown at the visioning plan on Avenue of Flags, so I don't think in this particular case, we should try to get the cart to drag the horse. I agree with Ed in the sense that there's a lot of people in this town that want arts and culture, and I think that's great, we should have that, but, and I'm very surprised at the people that come in here on a regular basis that are always asking for that or not here, I'm rather shocked. But I think you could get those individuals together to, to facilitate what Ed is saying is to put a plan together and say, okay, I think we're going to need X amount of dollars for this, X amount of dollars for that, instead of just saying, okay, here's 50K, and you guys just run off at a committee and sort of throw some money and hiring some people and some consultants, and then they run out of money and say, oh, we need another 50, and then they run out of money again. So, I, I agree with Ed that we should have the people that are pushing for this particular issue, put a plan together to come to us and then say, this is the amount of money that we need, rather than just tossing a dollar amount.
Councilmember Mercado?
Those are my same thoughts, I agree both with Ed and Dave. I just think that without having the committee formed and knowing what direction we're going to go into, and just have that money out there, I would rather just sit back with that money, get some interest, and they do know that we are willing to support them, we've made that distinction.
How do you know, how do they know that we're willing to support them?
Well, anybody who's come to the meetings and said, you know, we want to form this meeting and that's why we want to get the committee going. So, to like gets going, I just think that we're better off waiting to see what direction they want to go to, because if, in the visiting thing, you can, it can go for heart benches, bikes racks, murals, classes for art students to create a mural, which are all great and good, but till that's been established, if they're going to do any of this, I just think we need to wait and see where the money's going to go to. We just don't want to have a bridge to nowhere.
Any comments?
Originally this came about, I thought was a good idea, but I, I assumed that we would have, I think, a committee, or an ad hoc committee, that at least we'd have two.
That you were going to be a part of.
That's what I, I volunteered, I volunteered, but, and I'd be glad to be part of it, but the reason being is we should have somebody elected and somebody who's accountable for the money that goes to meetings, and I don't see where we need one penny for any committee at all. We have a pot of money to be spent upon approval by a committee, not, and to me, I mean, we're not throwing $50,000 out to be spent, we're putting $50,000 there to be used with the approval of the... approval of the, of the City Council only, so, and if Kyle could-
Please.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, if I might, I, I, as I understand the Arts and Culture Committee, it will take a group of people to get together, to meet, to set up the scope and the parameters. And so, as councilmembers have said, at this point, it is a question mark, because there is no committee yet. Being right in the middle of our busiest season with recreation and summer camp, my, my plan is to, in the fall, when camp is done, to solicit committee members to facilitate meetings, so that they can discuss how they would like to start out and make a plan for what kinds of ideas they'd like to do, what, really, to have a kind of sense of parameters, whether it's a bunch of people who really wanna focus on benches, or murals, or, you know, any combination of those. I think, once the committee begins to meet, and they start laying out some of those ground rules, and where they would like to go, I think that would be, give the council a better idea of what some possible funding needs would be, as they really coalesce those ideas.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, my turn. First of all, we went through an extensive visioning process, visioning process. Arts and culture was, was a big topic at these meetings. It's not just the people that didn't show up tonight that were interested in expanding arts and culture in our town. We're in a financial position where we actually could do something. We wanted to set up a committee, Kyle leading it, and Councilmember Sanchez agreed to be on it. I think you're gonna have a really hard time getting people to volunteer their time, if they're not sure that our City Council is going to support an actual arts and culture committee, any type of work done. I mean, we have to find out what, what type of arts we want. We were talking about putting benches by planters. Perhaps we could do tile benches created by local artisans. I mean, there are so many things that we can do. We're talking about putting the cart before the horse. I think you need to have money in an account, so that people know that you're really serious about a committee to actually expand arts and culture, actually to create arts and culture in our community. It doesn't mean that the money would be spent without coming to council for approval. That's why Mr. Sanchez, Councilmember Sanchez, would be there. They need to know that they have some parameters, that they have some funding to actually do something. If the money sits there for a year, two years, isn't used, okay, it's not used, but to know that there is money, that the council is serious about providing arts and culture to our community, I think is really important. I don't think we're throwing $50,000 out each year. I mean, you guys just approved $50,000 to the Visitors Bureau, and, and I think that this is just as important as our Visitors Bureau, their additional income. Whether we use it or not is really up to council, but I think if we benchmark this money, I think that's really important to our community, to let them know that we are serious about progressing. I mean, my goodness, we went through so much work to get to this point, I don't understand if the city has the money, and you put it into an account, and you don't use it, how does, how does that hurt our city, how does it hurt our finances? If we do come up with great ideas, we have a committee that Kyle will help to put together, that actually will have funding, that they know that they can bring to the council their ideas, and it'll happen. Anyway.
Madam Mayor?
Very passionate about this.
Could I-
Please.
-mention a couple more ideas? A business plan is a really healthy thing to have. People are impressed when you set, when you organize a plan, you have a chart, a flow chart. You know, when I looked at what we have before, so I will read, it says, "Build an art center or establish an art guild co-op," and then slash co-op. I don't want someone to take something like that and say, well, it's right here in the print, and you approved this, we didn't approve it, and so I'm just saying-
That's page two.
I'd like a business plan before we start trying to dole out the money, because it can be done. There are many things, but I'd like to hear from the artisans. There were some, there were some great ideas, I think, art, whoever mentioned the murals and all of those sort of things. Those are the cost of the oils and the paint to make something on some piece of property that we, we're not spending $45,000 or $450 for. We're just letting, we're, we're alive and well, but, and we've, you and I have both been involved with the Historical Society, and it is very tough, but when we, we got the Historical Society together, and we've had some fundraisers, been a long time dormant, but it's still available, and it's another opportunity for people to feel, have a passion for the history of the town, and we have some beautiful productions out in the, for the walking crowd to see what was on that site at the post office, you know, where we have our, what do we call them, the monument signs, or, okay? And so those, those all grew out of purposeful planning, but we didn't really have a blueprint. And so I'm just saying, before we go off on someone just saying, well, that's the way we read it, well, I'd like us to involve all of the people that would like, we'd like to hear from, maybe we, maybe we can have a community vision, or just a gathering at whenever, if they feel the need. If the artisans say, that's good, then I'd like to hear from them. I'm not an artist, but I, I know that we owe it to our citizens to have some direction, what's going on with the this or the that. And that's all I was saying tonight.
Yes, Scott, did, I'd just like to, Scott's been involved in stuff like this, and now it would be, in the, I mean, the finances of it, and that guy, I think-
Madam Mayor, members of the council, maybe, I might have a suggestion that'll help move this along. It's, see, and I'm coming into this in midstream, I wasn't here for the earlier discussion on this, so I'm not sure exactly where this is coming from, but from where I'm sitting right now, it seems that what we have is the City Council deciding to establish a city committee to be appointed, members to be appointed by the City Council, is that correct?
Well, our, Kyle would be, go ahead, Kyle. He would not appoint them.
Yes, I don't think there was any, any specification on the point. This would not be a Brown App Committee, or anything of that nature. It would, as far as I know, as the committee hasn't formed yet, but the idea is to gather people who have an interest in producing arts and culture, events, activities, pieces, to bring to the city, and gather them, facilitate setting of goals and ideas, and then bringing those to fruition with, with council approval of funding. So that's, that's my understanding, and hopefully that's the right understanding that council wanted.
If somebody came up with something, and none of us liked it, we could say, no, thank you.
Correct. It would be, it would be similar to, and to reference a project that the Historical Society did, with their different walking things, what have you called, monuments? Walking monuments. If, you know, if this committee decided, one of their, one of their ideas would be to do a utility box wrap for artists in the different utility boxes around town. They would, they would gather ideas, get some, some artists together with some possible designs, and then bring that, I would, by the staff report, bring that to the council to say, here's, the Arts and Culture Committee has a proposal for a utility box wrap, here's the cost estimate, do you approve?
Yep.
And that's a business plan. That's what I-
Correct. But most businesses, you'd have to have cash to start a business.
So what I would suggest, to maybe move this forward, is Kyle's indicated that he would be working to start forming this committee in the fall. Prior to August, prior to our meeting in August, I would suggest that I sit down with Kyle, I start working out a rough framework, essentially a charge for this committee, that the council's gonna give them a charge to accomplish something. We create that, bring it back to the City Council for approval. If the City Council is comfortable with the charge that this committee will be formed under, at that point, the council may be comfortable enough to allocate a line item in the budget with $50,000 in it. The committee obviously doesn't have the authority to spend that money, the City Council would have to spend that money, but at least at that point, you've got a document establishing a committee with a formal charge from the City Council as to what their purpose and function is, and the indication in the budget that the City Council is serious about, about providing funding for these types of improvements. And at that point going forward, then it's incumbent upon the committee to come up with projects that fit within the scope or the charge that the City Council has established, and bring that to the City Council in sufficient detail that the council's comfortable to authorize the expenditure.
So, yeah. Well stated.
I'd like to make a motion that we-
This is just direction. This is just direction.
Time out. Don't have a direction.
I would like to have specific verbiage, that the allocation of those funds in any project has to be approved by this body before it goes out there, and I get blamed for it.
Councilmember King, that was the original, that was what we had planned all along. While we discussed in our budget, we could discuss the $50,000 line item per year when we were doing our budget discussions.
Right.
Somehow this item did not make it into the budget, and I'm really surprised, because I just thought that this would be to correct an omission from a previous meeting. I'm really surprised, guys.
Well, I understand that, but the Art Committee is not gonna get blamed for anything that's out there that you drive by and go, what the hell is that?
The City Council has to approve everything.
Well, I understand that, but there's some times that we have budgets, I don't tell her what to spend her budget on. I don't tell her what to, to spend her budget on.
She's a city employee now.
Right, I understand that, but that's what I'm saying, this is gonna be a line item, but I wanna be very specific, that we approve any project that is funded by this money.
Absolutely.
And that would maybe be the bylaws.
We would put that in, and I don't envision formal bylaws coming from, from staff at this point, maybe at some point, initially, just this charge, and we can make that a part of the charge, that the committee will have no direct spending authority, or the ability to recommend projects to the City Council for authorization.
Okay.
Ultimately, the City Council's gonna make the decision as to what the charge, and what the purpose and function of this committee is, as well as what, or how public funds are expended. We can lay that out in advance, so that the City Council's comfortable with it, establish a budget adjustment at the same time, and then move forward with the formation of the committee after that. And if at any point along the way, the City Council becomes uncomfortable with the process, we have the ability to put the brakes on it, take a step back, and see what changes you can make.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'm not happy. I mean, no.
Is there any item that's a good earning issue that needs to be done?
I mean, I understand the compromise, but, yeah.
I think that's a good direction that Scott's taking us to, so I think, small steps, but we know, we've all discussed it, and so I think we're all behind it, we just need to have all the ducks in a row, and I think that's all we're asking.
Are we, to put the $50,000 into the-
We're not doing anything tonight.
Nothing, we just discussed it.
I think it's formation, is what we're-
Yeah, it was just discussing funding for the Arts and Culture Committee.
Yeah.
So we got our direction.
You sure do. All righty, moving on to City Manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just clarification, do we, do we wanna address a particular issue regarding a letter to the County Board of Supervisors?
Oh, my gosh, yes. Okay, do you wanna, we, we've met with Supervisor Hartman yesterday afternoon, we have a cannabis, they're, they're meeting next Tuesday to discuss cannabis, so I, we kinda need a consensus tonight. One of the things that they're discussing is the distance of cannabis growers from city limits, and we were hoping, we were hoping to get a mile, she said that that's gonna be a hard sell. So she's looking at 1,500 feet?
They're looking at 1,500 feet, but I don't think it's unreasonable for the City Council to ask for the, the most distance we can get from, from the city limits. They're, they're talking about, not necessarily a distance from the city limits, as I understand it, but a, a distance from urbanized areas, which in our particular case, equates to about the same thing, so.
So before we talk, I'd like to let you know, and the mayor asked me about this earlier, you can actually add this to your agenda. Government Code, Section 54954.2B2, says that when the City Council finds by a two-thirds vote, which would mean four of the five of you, that immediate action is required, and the need for the action arose, or came to the city's attention after the agenda was posted, by this four-fifths vote, you can add an item to the agenda. Obviously, as the mayor and the city manager said, this came up yesterday afternoon, this particular hearing has been continued to next Tuesday, it would be very difficult to get a discussion with the five of you on Monday, and get a letter to the county by Tuesday. So today, and we can't do it tomorrow, because we would have to agendize it for tomorrow, and we're pretty much too late to do that. So this really does have to be done today, if you wanna do it at all. So the first thing I would ask for is a motion and a second, to add an item to the agenda called Discussion and Direction Regarding Taking a Formal Position on Potential Changes to the County of Santa Barbara Cannabis Ordinance. And if we do that, then we can go from there.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second, second.
Yeah, black and second.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we can just do it, all in favor?
Aye. Okay. So you now have added it to the agenda legally, and you can have a full discussion, so I'll turn it back to the City Manager.
Thank you very much, Manager Wolf, I just, I got so proud of my last item, I just totally blew it.
I almost did too. So, I, I think your explanation was great, I think we can, what I'm looking for is direction from the City Council as to how to address this. It seems that the supervisor had indicated a desire to hear from Buellton on this matter, and this is our opportunity to give them that input. Whatever input the City Council would like to provide to the county, I will put in the form of a letter for the mayor's signature, or my signature, however you wanna do it, and we'll get it to the county as soon as possible.
We still get complaints from the farmland area, City Hall in the afternoon, there are aromas that walk around town, and although we cannot stop some of this growing that's going on, we can at least ask that it be kept as far from our city limits as possible.
There is also a proposal they're looking at to require conditional use permits for certain locations within the Ag II zone that the county has.
Twenty acres or more, right?
Twenty acres or more, or, no, it's, that's for the Ag I. No, I, I don't recall off the top of my head, but there's a provision there also that requires them for parcels which are adjacent to, or adjoining to, urbanized parcels. So it doesn't really impact Buellton at the moment, but it does impact a particular location in Solvang, and so they've taken a position on that. It probably would be beneficial to take that same position in order to prevent something like that from occurring in the future.
We can, how, how far is the pot farm, the one that we can smell right now? Do you have a footage, or a mileage, or anything?
I honestly don't know. I'm not sure where they're located.
It's gotta be the one down 246, though, right? Because it comes right down the border.
There may, there's somewhere across the river as well.
And then we have Santa Rosa Road.
Santa Rosa Road.
That's where the farmland residents are.
Yeah. We asked for a mile, and there's already one in less than a mile, then, I mean, I'd like to ask for a mile, because that does carry, and then-
Supervisor Hartman said that she would like to see a mile, but she didn't think she had the support of the other supervisors.
I think we should ask for it, and if she can ask for it, 'cause Carbonia didn't ask for it, and, you know, at least we can start, even if it's more, I'd rather at least be on record that we want it further, so.
Sounds like you need to be specific, and not just willy-nilly on it, so.
Greg, is there any superseding state law that says what the distance has to be from any area, or is it just left up to the communities?
That's left up to the communities. In fact, we have another city we represent completely urban- In fact, we have another city we represent completely urbanized, and there's an indoor growing facility that has been proposed by the city next door, directly across the street from an apartment building in our city. So there's no limit in state law where they can go.
So we could ask for five if we wanted.
You can ask for what you want to ask for, but.
To the moon.
Oh, well, we can ask for five and then make a compromise. Come on, let's make a deal.
Well, just, I would, I think I would put down, you know, we'd like to see all growers at least a mile or to the max, to whatever supervisors feel is the maximum possible. I mean.
With prevailing, we know it's not going to matter too much.
Carbonaria's having a major issue with this.
Yeah.
Or order a donut with the city, dig out the flowers.
The issue there is they've taken over what used to be orchard farmers and some other.
Other greenhouses.
Other greenhouse, yeah. So they're there, and looking at it from both sides, yeah. People say, "Yeah, it is farming, well, it is agriculture, but it's kind of a green area of agriculture."
They could put it right over the bridge, just.
So we do have consent then that a letter?
I think so.
Are we going to support her at a mile?
I don't think.
She's asked it for a while, right?
If she's asking for a mile, she's not going to.
She's asking for 1,500 feet.
Yeah, I think she thought 1,500 feet was more realistic. The mayor actually suggested a mile. She agreed, but didn't think she would be able to get.
You can go in there, you can ask for the world, but then if you don't have any basis to establish it, I think you go ask for the 1,500, knowing that you're going to go in there and protect that and bargain for that, knowing that you can be able to get that, never getting for the moon. I think you're better off that one. We can back you up on that one 100 percent.
Then I have direction. Just one last question. The hearing is on Tuesday, and just if the council would like staff presence at that hearing to voice the city's opinion, I'll be happy to attend. Otherwise, we'll send a letter and let the supervisor.
I think we should send you.
You might ask the supervisor, but Tuesday's meeting went past 7:30 in the evening.
We have to come up on the agenda.
Can you get Friday off?
It's a very volatile subject, and there's going to be quite a turnout, so I don't know if having another body there is going to be useful. I think having perhaps a letter that all the supervisors look at, I think we should get.
Can we direct the letter to all the supervisors?
Talk to Supervisor Hartman's office and maybe get some direction. I hate to have you sitting down in Santa Barbara all day Tuesday for your three minutes.
I do too, but that's part of the job, if that's what you want me to do. I can check with the supervisor's office, and if the supervisor's office feels it's beneficial to have city presence there, I'll be happy to attend.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All righty, so you've got direction. Now we can move on to City Manager's Report, and thank you so much, both of you, for reminding me.
And committee reports, did you have any? I think you skipped over that one.
Yeah, I think.
I did not.
You did ask him.
I didn't speak. I didn't have one.
She asked.
Oh, she asked.
You asked her. You asked her. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my first City Manager's Report. Let me just say one more time, the last time I'm going to say it probably because it's going to get really ugly after this, but thank you for inviting me to here.
You're going to regret that.
I know. I really appreciate it. I'm having a great time. It's a wonderful staff. It's a wonderful city. I'm blessed to be here right now, and I'm sure that two, three years from now, I'll feel exactly the same way. Just a couple of items for you this evening. The first item is just a reminder and an announcement to the public that our Public Works Department has been working to ensure that our water treatment plants are adequately protected in the event of mishap, or in this case, we're anticipating that we may have some power shut offs here over the summer with, by PG&E in order to maintain public safety so that we don't have power lines spark fires again. When the weather gets hot, the air gets dry and the wind moves pretty quick, those power lines go down, and that's when the fires start. So in order to prevent that from becoming an issue for the city, the city has purchased a generator for one of our waste, one of our water treatment plants, pardon me. If the council has questions on that, our Public Works Director has all the details, but that expenditure was made here this past week, and we anticipate it'll be a couple of months before that generator arrives on site. We're looking into alternatives in the event that weather arrives quicker than expected to potentially rent a generator in the meantime. So that's ongoing. Our Planning Department notes that construction on the Village Park is moving along nicely. I drove by there today, and grass is laid out, and the gazebo is looking nice. Work is still continuing. If you haven't gone by and seen it, take a drive by and take a look. It's coming along nicely. Yes, sir.
Just regarding the gazebo, could we revisit what we had originally talked about because it's a, there are no steps. No one's going to fall down the steps. There are no steps on the gazebo.
A little smaller than we thought.
It's on the ground, and if you wouldn't mind bringing back what we have on record for the gazebo construction, because I specifically remember using the Solvang gazebo as a template or an idea. And you could get two of those gazebos in the Solvang gazebo, but you have to go about six steps to get the Solvang, and ours is just.
I will review the construction plans and then.
I'm just wondering if the council felt the same way. It's, if you haven't.
What did we say?
If you haven't seen it, you deserve to go by and see what.
Two harmonica players?
What six, yeah, I think, we were talking about two harmonica players could perform that. So we just, I'd like to just make sure if there's any, I don't know if Rose has a comment on it, but I mean, you were, I think you were here when we laid out the idea. I remember specifically, are we going to have cobblestone around it or grass? And we're very detailed.
Summer concerts.
Noontime concerts, I guess is what we could have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly. And then the last item I just want to bring up tonight as a reminder, the 17th Annual Beulton Barbecue Bonanza, Saturday, the 27th of July, from 11 to 2 at River View Park. Please come. It'll be fun.
It always is.
And with that, I will conclude my report, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
On the generator, just from my information, because I was going to ask, what is our generator inventory? We have one in the plant, behind the Planning Department, and we have one, do we have one in this building, and we have one at the sewer plant?
No, there is one at the McMurray Water Treatment Plant. There is a small one at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, and that's adequate though for us to use, right?
We still, we do need to upgrade that. It's not enough to run the entire wastewater plant, but at least there's one there.
Yeah, you could run a section of it.
Right. And there is the large one for the EOC at the, at City Hall. Well, it's actually behind the planning section, right? And we're still looking at other means and grants. I think the fire department was one of the ones that had an option maybe for the City Hall as an alternative as well. But yeah, so, and then we already have one purchased end of last fiscal year for the McMurray Booster Station, so at least we'll be able to get water up to reservoir 3. And then again, as the city manager mentioned, we have one underway for the Highway 246.
So that's about five.
Yes. And I think there's a small generator with recreation as well.
Oh.
One we use for events and.
The Santa Rosa. The generator, how long did they say they were going to have blackouts there? Was it just indefinite, or they were going to give you six hours or 10 hours, 12 hours?
I have yet to meet with PG&E representative on that. We're trying to schedule a meeting right now. I'm not certain they're going to give us a timeframe. I think when the weather conditions warrant, they will simply start to shut down, which is part of the angst that people have, is that you just are not going to know, we're not going to have a lot of warning when that's going to happen.
For an undisclosed amount of time?
But for as long as is necessary. But I can tell you from firsthand experience, the consequences for not doing that can be catastrophic. And we threw a fire last year that was caused just by that, and there were, it was a significant component of the population that resisted having that power shut off, and Edison didn't shut it off, and that's, and the Woolsey Fire was a result. So I'll be, I'll be meeting with PG&E here shortly. We'll get as much detail as I can, and I'll get that to the city council in a way.
Do we have any, what is the plans for the wastewater generator? Yeah, I know we have a little one, and it's, but it's pretty labor intensive to get things going at the wastewater treatment plant. I didn't, do we have plans for getting a new generator there as well?
Yes, eventually as well. I don't think I have it, I don't know that I have it budgeted this fiscal year because of other improvements we may need to do, but I think I have a budget in the next fiscal year.
Are we filling the reservoirs anymore to, so I have more water storage? Because anyway, we have an 850,000 gallon reservoir, is that full?
No, not right now. It's not full to the top, no.
Yeah, because it, you can, you could fill the reservoir.
Right, and that's why the importance of getting the McMurray Booster Station with a generator, so that pump can actually fill, but bring water up there.
Sounds like everybody's on the same page.
I just want to thank you. It's nice to have you here, Beulton City Council. I am adjourning this meeting, and we'll see you all.